The House Meeting of the Casco Board to Order, you please rise for the pledge to the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the next item is approval of the agenda. I have a couple additions. Under Correspondence, Item E, and that's Greenwood Township Correspondence. And under New Business, Item E, Hall Cleaning.
If there's no other additions, I would like to make a motion to approve the agenda with the two additions.
Support.
Moved and supported to approve the agenda as amended. Any discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion carries. The next item is approval of the minutes for the regular meeting of Tuesday, July 8th.
If there are no corrections, I'll make a motion that the minutes be approved as presented.
I'll support that.
Moved and supported to approve the minutes for the July 8th meeting as presented. Any discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion carries. The next item is the financial report. Colleen?
We began the month with $327,218.41 and we made, we took in receipts of $60,083.09 and we made disbursements of $115,865.29, leaving us with an ending balance in the general fund of $271,436.21.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the financial report as submitted.
Support.
Moved and supported to approve the financial report as submitted. Any discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion carries. The next item under is Correspondence, Item A, Senator Phil Pavlov sent us a model resolution and a bunch of information, and this involves the proposed nuclear storage facility in Canada. I talked to Mr. Pavlov a couple times. I don't know that the resolution itself would have any value, so I didn't really fill it out. He's very upbeat that under the 1909 treaty, they can get the Great Lakes thing going like they did 25 years ago when they wanted to export water, and that might work. So, he thinks that's the way that if it's gonna be successful, that's the way.
What was his rationale for sending this model resolution to us?
I think it's just PR, basically.
I mean, it's more educational. Does he feel it has any value?
No, I don't believe so.
I think really gonna read the resolutions and...
Well, I think he's hoping that he could say when he comes to the bargaining table, "Look at all the communities in my district clearly, you know, don't want this."
Yeah, but that's outlined in the Boundary Treaty of 1909. I mean, you don't have to keep making new laws and new resolutions and new this. Revert back to the Boundary Treaty of 1909. That pretty much says what the state of Michigan and the surrounding areas who are touched by that water want to do.
Then why are we, why is there even an issue out there? I mean, it's not like a settled deal apparently, you know?
Well, but it's been going on for more than two years, and apparently that there's a pretty good impetus to do it. The largest nuclear plant in Canada is right there where, you know, they wanna put it. And, but if they can implement the treaty with the commission, Great Lakes Commission, that means that everybody would have to ratify all the states and stuff. Well, that's probably never gonna happen. So, I don't know.
So, the treaty may not be effective in this situation?
It will be effective if they can get it implemented for that purpose. And if you read the technicality of the treaty, it should be applicable, because it's anything that will affect the whole region.
And I'm sure there's all kinds of pressure, politics, lobbying, and legal maneuvering to get around that, I'm sure.
Maybe Canada's so green that they ship all their trash over here, so I can't believe it's that favorable over there.
Well, I think it all comes down to business. There's probably, people are making a lot of money to ship and store that.
Well, I would think so. I would think so.
Of course. Just like with the garbage coming over here, and it's like our herald when we get on the campus.
So, I didn't fill it out, put it on the agenda. I don't believe it's necessary, but certainly I can express, you know, the board's feeling that, you know, they don't think it's a good idea to put it a mile from, like, here.
Is there any reason not to do the resolution?
No, we can do it next month if you want.
We'd like to see it on the agenda next month for further discussion.
Okay. Anybody have an objection to that?
It doesn't seem like it would do any harm.
No, it doesn't do any harm, it just, yeah.
If he has a lot of these, it's like, okay, all in his tissue.
No problem. If no one has an objection, then we'll put it on the agenda for next month.
Maybe he's gonna be quite enough.
Yeah, it's been going on for three years, so I can't believe it's gonna be a great shakes, whether it's this month or next. Okay, Item B, resignation of Wayne Baumgarten from the Planning Commission. Wayne is here tonight. Last month, we appointed him constable, so he had to turn in his resignation, which we acted upon, and so he could be constable, because he could not do both. So, I just put it on here for Correspondence. You have a copy of his resignation. Thank him for his years of service to the Planning Commission.
Yes.
We'll find some other jobs, I suppose.
I'm sure of that.
Okay, you were demanding the spot fetching the generator last week, I imagine.
Oh, yeah, you saved the day.
Got the election going.
Geez, so you're the hero.
Why am I the hero? Maybe I'll get a plan.
Hero?
Yeah.
That's a while.
Hero. And you just have the WB truck there. Boy, they're easy tonight. Okay, moving on. Item C, communication from Richmond Lennox EMS. And I already had the board package made out, but it was on the front page of the paper last week that they're taking over the senior program in Richmond Township. So, I'm sure that's gonna, Richmond Lennox EMS is a very well-run organization, and I'm sure that's gonna work out well. The next item, One D, gentleman came in that they're gonna be having a golf outing September 13th, 2014, at Golden Hawk, and it's for Michigan Disabled Veterans. If you'd like more information, you can certainly get it from us, or you can, their website must be on here someplace. GoldenHawk, PhantomGolf.com. But just call the township, and we can get you more information. And it's a worthy cause, and hope a lot of folks can go and enjoy the day.
Yeah, it just, you're starting to see a lot of employers. I know Chrysler's taking an effort to hire vets. There's a program that they'll place veterans in entry-level management and engineering positions. This company will place them in there, and if they like them a period of time, the company will hire them on full time, so.
Yeah, I think most organizations are doing that. I know Fireman and Emergency Workers Services in the state of Illinois has a priority.
Yeah, that's good. That shouldn't be forgotten. You can't forget about it.
Okay, moving on. Item E, we got a correspondence from Greenwood Township, and this is in regards to the sale of the art van building to the county, when they utilized money from the library and parking wrecks. And I'm sure if you've read the paper, this was a hot spot for the last two months. They had their attorney send a communication to Mr. Wendling in St. Clair County, the prosecuting attorney. Have him, and hopefully that he would pass it on to the AG. He has declined to do that, so now they're working through Senator Pavlov to try and get a determination from the AG whether the language in the library millage ballot was applicable for them to use the money. And their other complaint is, if they do give the money back to the library eventually, they will pay no milli, or no interest. So, I spoke with Supervisor Gill, and she requested that, you know, we could maybe send a letter of support or something. I have not done anything yet. I don't know where this is gonna go. I think it's, I mean, in principle, it's probably good, but I don't think it's gonna achieve anything, because the county commissioners hold all the purse strings, and if they can't do it one way, I'm sure they can do it another way. I mean, they're not losing much interest right at the moment, because I don't know what they're gonna do with the land. So, I just put it on. You guys can look it over.
Is Greenwood Township, are they thinking that was illegal, the action?
Yeah, basically.
Okay.
Yeah, but it's done all the time, isn't it?
Well...
And they're repaying it.
If they don't, if they don't utilize the property for either one of the purposes, they have to repay the money to that organization.
Right.
Parking wrecks, their language says they get interest. Library says it doesn't mention interest. So, that makes them mad, because they don't know what they're gonna do with the property yet.
So, if they just turn this property into, let's say, a large parking area that's utilized by the court system, by the library, by the county office, they wouldn't have to repay anything. They'd have to, they'd have to show that, you know, the library's using this. Well, yeah, I know, I know. That's what I'm thinking they're gonna use it for. So, I don't know. I know that we wouldn't be able to do it without jumping through a whole lot of hoops with Mark Broschu. We wouldn't. We would have to prove this, we would have to prove that. We'd have to get permission before we even attempted it. But we are not the county board of commissioners.
So, this is just kinda informational. We'll see. They said if the senator is successful to get the AG to consider it, it would be at least six months before they hear back. So, we'll see. Okay, moving on. Old Business, Item A, St. Clair County ORB ordinance. Included in your package is some stuff that I sent to all the county commissioners and county executive before the public hearing. I went to the public hearing last week. There was only about six speakers. I don't know. It was two that were highly in favor of it, two that absolutely hated it, and the other two were in the middle of something. But there wasn't that much interest. But it was a, the public hearing was held by their committee, and all the committee did, as they had other things at night, is they pass it, it's gonna be passed to the full commission for action. Now, our commissioner, at this time, is going to vote no. He has six townships. Ira has one, an ORB ordinance, and the other five townships are against it. So, I don't know. There's a possibility it could pass. I have no idea. So, but...
Was there a lot of people in attendance at the hearing?
No, there was more people there for other things, I think. Oh, what was really amusing, I guess, is the county's kinda kicking themselves a little bit, because when they got along this far, they thought, they, you know how you get the little stickers from the state for your ORB? They could've issued one of those from the county and ripped them. Twenty bucks a vehicle or something, made some money out of the deal. But they think it's too late to do that now. So, a couple of the people up there were kinda whining about that.
I think, say, it's 2020.
Yeah, so, I don't know.
If they approved this, or just one township, let's say they approved this, you know, would they only allow people, the townships, to approve it, to have it in theirs? I mean...
No, we can do that now. That's why Ira has it. But...
They're gonna want to do it countywide on county...
But if they approve it countywide, any township has the option of, you know?
Okay.
That's why, I don't know why they wanna do it, if any township that wants it can do it now.
Right.
And they tell you the only thing that it's good for is that you get countywide enforcement. And I said, "Well, that falls apart if any township that wants it can opt out."
If, I would think it's better for individual communities to, because people know Ira allows it. Because if they say it's countywide, guess what? And we opt out of it, they're still, they're not gonna know that, and they're gonna be running up and down the road.
So, I don't know, because they said, you know, Clay Township's really in favor. Well, then let Clay Township have it.
Exactly. And Clay Township has a police department.
Right, absolutely. That'd be the determining factor, and we do know. So, that's kinda the update on that. Okay, moving on. New Business, Item A, the Ira Township Agreement. Last year, I talked with Ira Township, as well as our other neighbors, and inquired about sharing the cost of streetlights. The Ira Township Board approved that, and Mr. McCoy, their supervisor, he likes documents a lot, so he sent me this. And then he called and said, "Are you gonna sign it?" And I said, "I can sign it, but it says on your, the one you made, it says approved by the board." So, I guess you want the board to approve it. And he said, "Oh, yeah, I guess." So, here we are. It's exactly the same as they approved at their board meeting. It's exactly the same as what I gave them last year, and it's just an agreement that for all the streetlights on Reed City Highway, we're gonna share the cost. And when you crunch the numbers, when it gets all done, they're gonna pay us $305.19 a year.
Okay, that's right, that's what I was gonna, we've been paying it, just like Columbus Township along Division Road, they're the one, they pay.
Well, I'm still working on them. And Lennox, they've agreed, they paid us half this spring.
Now, on Division Road right now, who pays for the lights at the intersection?
We pay. The only one we don't is probably the one on Grashit, but that's kinda convoluted now because of the annexation and stuff. But all the rest are ours, where the road goes through.
I thought always, like, Division Road was the Columbus Township responsibility, and Reed City Highway was the...
Yeah, but when Casco decided to put up streetlights at the main intersection, they included that road. So, but I'm still working on them.
I never knew that.
We'll wear them down.
I mean, I made a motion to approve this agreement with Ira.
I'll support that. Moved and supported to approve the sharing of the streetlight costs with Ira Township. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion carries. Okay, Item B, really don't have the update. I kinda gave you some information. We talked last year, and we talked earlier this year. The Planning Commission changed the parkland as ZOM ROS, Recreation Open Space. The Planning Commission changed it so that you could farm it, but it would be a special land use. So, I kinda looked in it. I tried to outline the cost. It's gonna cost us like $375 for special land use. That's a one-time cost. Publications, estimated $120, and that would be for the special land use and to rent it. The taxes would be approximately $2,500 a year, and we'd be looking at 50 acres. So, I crunched the numbers. If you got $75 an acre, you know, you would make like $1,000 for the parking wrecks. No way would we rent it at a loss. But it would achieve one thing of cleaning up the property before it all goes to brush, that's gonna cost you, I don't know what it'll take to do. I spoke with Mr. Broschu at a parking recreation. He thought it was a great idea to do it. So, if the board has no objections, or whatever, I would start the special land use process with the Planning Commission. If you want a motion to that effect, that'd be great.
I would move that the supervisor start the special land use procedure to allow the park land to be used in agriculture.
I'll support that.
Okay, I'd just like to mention that we're only, only the land that's tillable will be rented. The rest will remain in the park. We won't pay tax on it. We're just paying on the part that is tilled.
I need how many acres?
Fifty.
Fifty of them?
That's a guess. I called the county, their Farm Services, and they estimated 48 acres. So, I think that we can hit 50.
Okay.
But it's in that law part.
I've got Supervisor to start special land use to allow parkland...
Special land use procedure.
Procedure to allow parkland for farming.
Right.
See your proceedings.
Proceedings, whatever.
Proceeds.
To obtain a, to attempt to obtain a special land use as required by the zoning ordinance to use the park land as, for agricultural purposes.
Okay, moved and supported. Any discussion?
Who supported it, Patty?
No discussion, level of vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion carries. Okay, the next item on the agenda, and part of it, I put a new copy on your table, because we added two more financial institutions, and I don't wanna be doing this every month. Came to my attention that, under Michigan law, the board has to approve using any financial institution. And over the past few years, all the banks are changing names, are getting bought out, so we're trying to bring that up to date. So, on the second sheet, Colleen listed all the banks and institutions we're currently using, and we added two to that list, which is on the table in front of you, and hopefully that'll take care of it. So, we would need a vote to approve Resolution 2014-10.
So, I have to adopt it.
Okay, well, I make, I make a motion...
I redid that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'll support it.
Okay. Moved and supported to adopt Resolution 2014-10. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll have a roll call vote, please.
Colleen?
Yes.
Phil?
Aye.
Pat?
Aye.
Joe?
Yes.
And Dan?
Yes.
Motion carries. Moving on, Item B, appointment of Keith Teltow to the Planning Commission. As I mentioned earlier, Wayne Baumgarten had resigned because he'd been appointed constable. I spoke to Mr. Teltow a couple years ago, and in Kroger's, I think it was, and I said, "Hey, if we ever have, if we ever have an opening, are you interested?" And he said, "Well, maybe." So, I contacted Mr. Teltow, and he said, "Yes, he would, he would serve on the Planning Commission." So, he gave us a little bio here. He's been a lifelong resident, and a good citizen, and some of his skills he's acquired, I think, would be very useful on the Planning Commission. Is there anything you wanna say, Mr. Teltow?
Well, just good evening, folks, and I thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity to work with the township. And Wayne, it's gonna be tough to fill your shoes, I know that.
Well, you can do it.
We've been trying. But thanks again, and we will push forward and work with you and the residents of Casco Township.
Okay, I, I'm sorry, I make a resolution to...
No.
A motion, sorry, a motion.
That's okay, that's good.
A motion to appoint Keith Teltow to the Casco Township Planning Commission.
I'll second the motion.
Joe, you wanna include in that to complete Wayne's term?
Oh, yeah, to complete the term of Wayne Baumgarten.
And you support that also, Dan?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, moved and supported to appoint Keith Teltow to the Planning Commission to complete the term of Wayne Baumgarten. Any discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion carries. Do you wanna stop in this week? We got some stuff from the planner about the site plan that's on a review next week, because that's easy for you, otherwise I can ship it to you or whatever you want.
On paper, and we gotta send you some paperwork too.
Yeah, you gotta fill it.
I'll give you a call.
Okay, sounds good. Okay, moving on. This was an addition. We've had the same lady cleaning the offices and stuff for many years, and I don't think there's 100% satisfaction with what she's been doing, and we wanna look into the matter. And while we're doing that, if we can work out something with this lady, I'd be more than glad to do that. But we'll also probably look, examine if we have other options.
Okay.
So, I'm just bringing this to the board for their, basically, information. And no action will be taken without board approval.
So, you're gonna call Bonnie in and talk to her?
Yep, I'd like to.
Good, okay.
I mean, you know, if...
Are you receiving other bids?
Well, let's talk to her first and see what she says. And if you're not satisfied with the job she's doing, and she says, "Okay, I'll do this better, this, this, this," and if she doesn't, we can still consider other bids, but...
Well, then we need to put it in the paper, and it needs to be a motion, right?
Well, I say, let's talk to her first.
Okay, alright, that's fine.
We can check out other avenues in case she either doesn't, is not happy with our discussion, or the results aren't as good as we would like them to be.
Okay.
So, that was kinda informational. Okay, moving on. Payment of the bills.
Yeah, I have a, just a quick question. The board review members, how come the 879, is that just for one meeting for them?
That's for one hour. $10 an hour.
I see, so, okay. So, they had like a quarterly meeting, or...
Yeah, they had a July meeting. It lasted an hour, so it'll pay per hour.
I see. That's the only question I have.
Okay. Make a motion to approve the bills?
I'll support that.
Moved and supported to pay the bills. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll have a roll call vote, please.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Pat, yes. Phil?
Aye.
And Colleen?
Yes.
Okay, moving on. Citizens' comments. Anyone in the audience have anything they'd like to comment, or question, or whatever, in regards to the board? This is your opportunity to do so.
I'd like to comment on the election, if I may.
Sure.
We basically had a brand-new group of people who had really never worked an election before, and they did an outstanding job. We were here 17 hours that day, and they never missed a beat.
Plus, you had the power outage.
We had a power outage till 3:30, and Wayne came in with his backup.
He and Bill Kelly office running.
And we had our office running, and...
So, it went very well. Under the worst of conditions, you would've never known...
That we were working under.
It could've been a presidential election. That would've been really bad.
You know what? And they would've skated right through, because that's kinda people we've got.
How many voters went through?
About 500, right? About half, or...
AV's a little less than half. 240 in AV's, 100, 100...
135.
135, and 97 downstairs.
Yeah, seeing that, that's too bad, because, you know, primary elections and a lot of other local elections, some are some more important that affects your life closer to you. And when you get to the gubernatorial, like we'll see in America, especially presidential, it's like the full moon's out.
So, I just wanted to acknowledge those folks, because they did a wonderful job.
And not all of them, but most of them are residents of Casco, and it is a very long day. Everybody says, "You're just sitting there." Well, you're sitting there many, many hours, and you gotta pay attention to what you're doing, because at the end of the day, it better add up, or it's gonna be a longer day. So, we like to thank everyone that worked the election.
We'd like to thank Patty and Brenda for heading this all up. I mean, they were, they had it all together and helped us all out, gave us confidence that we could put those seals on and do what we were supposed to do to wrap it all up at the end of the day. They had a little checklist, and they followed it to the T, and Casco Township, I hope, is known for that, for crossing their Ts and dotting their Is and getting the job done.
You know, I still think, you know, I know there's electronic means, but still, they have that paper belt, that tangible evidence, although I think it's important that we maintain that.
I hope it stays, but I got a sunny feeling it's gonna go, eventually go away.
Yeah, well...
We can just hope that they make it easier, you know?
Democracy wasn't meant to be easy and efficient. You want easy and efficient, there's plenty of dictatorships around the world.
Well, that isn't easy and efficient, a dictatorship. I'm talking about the running of an election.
Yes.
Not, it's not easy.
No, and it shouldn't be totally easy, because it's very...
But then again, you have... Then you have to make sure that everybody is able to vote, and that's why we had AV votes. I had a gentleman that came that couldn't walk at all. He couldn't come in, so I went out to him.
No, I'm not questioning you.
Okay.
You ladies...
I'm just, you're talking about the actual voter.
Yes.
Versus electronic, versus having that ballot in your hand. I got you. I got you.
That, that, they look, if there's a question about who won and who lost, there's actual physical evidence, it's not in cyberspace.
That's true, okay. That's true.
It's a security.
Right, right.
Yes.
Ladies, what seems to be the problem with that? Is it do the carpeting with the holes in, they got to clean around it, or, I mean, and the, and the buckling of the tile in the bathrooms and so on?
Pretty well down we get.
I see it now, I'm, I'm, it's winter.
Well, that's come out, all the voters going to the bathroom, pushing it back down.
It's the hot weather.
Well, I was just wondering, I mean, I don't think this would be an easy place to clean. And with all due respect to the ladies who we've had here, but they did a pretty good job, to tell you the truth.
I have one other thing about elections. I wish school boards would handle their own elections. They're a separate government entity in the state of Michigan.
I totally agree with you.
And they should handle their own elections.
I totally agree with you. I do.
Enough said.
All right, thank you. I support you.
At least at this time.
Totally.
Okay, a couple of things, real quick. Today, I believe, is the start of the Armada Fair, and it's quite a local event. The St. Clair County Fair was, 4H Fair was in July, and, uh, I'm sure it's the weather cooperates, so have a great fair over in Armada. I don't know if they're going to see this before the fair is over, but if they do, go enjoy yourself the Armada Fair. Uh, the only other thing I had was, uh, local business, North Point Storage donated two blueprint cabinets right behind Roland's and Ugo there, and we appreciate that a great deal. And from home, yeah, but they made it this far.
They're really nice. You open them up, they're little cuppy.
Well, that's nice.
For prints.
So, we appreciate it. Anybody else have anything?
I don't, thank you.
Nobody? Then we are up to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Support.
Who did support to adjourn? All those in favor?
Aye.
Just adjourned.